Be an honor, sir.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Here.
Councilwoman DeWitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Carr. Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman Flynn.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Forbes.
Here.
Well, good afternoon. We'll start this afternoon with any public comment. Any members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward at this time. Okay, seeing none. Ann. Hello.
Good afternoon, Ann Wright, Finance Director. It's hard to believe it's a year already. Looking forward to giving you this preliminary update on where we are. The year, again, when we were here a year ago, we never, well, at least I never anticipated the year that we were going to have, so a lot of things have happened. Going to stay right with the agenda, and the first section will deal with the preliminary projection of FY 2018 fund balance. Want to start with where we ended FY 17, September 30, 2017, with our fund balance. That's our starting point. That's the audited fund balance. And on this slide three, you can see that down towards the bottom, we have subsequent years budget. At the time that we did finalize the budget, the hurricane had occurred and we knew that we needed to budget some for the hurricane expenses, and we did add $6 million into the FY 2018 budget. That resulted in us using some fund balance that then left us with just the $4,787,261 to be used in the FY 18 budget. Additionally, we had unassigned fund balance of $135,349. So those two amounts totaling $4.9 million is what we had available to use during this current fiscal year as fund balance to help us with the expenses. The next slide, Slide four, shows the first column of where we were with our budget. So the first column is our FY 2018 original budget, and at that time, we thought our available fund balance, projecting what that would be, would be $4.8 million. When we completed the fiscal year and the audit was complete, we actually had the $4.9 million to start with, which is on the expected FY 2018 column. So again, that first column works through the budget, what we, the budget was approved for, and our budget at that time expected that by the end of FY 18, we would have fund balance available or spendable of $19,507. With the numbers that we have projected for FY 18, in this second column, you can see that we are dipping into some of our reserve balances. And with the numbers that we've updated based on what we project our revenues to be, which we're projecting that they will be $558,000 higher than we budgeted, but our expenses are going to be higher as well, and we have had budget amendments throughout the year to reflect the expenditure side, but it looks like we will be dipping into our reserves $287,000. And that would be something that we would want to replenish. Any questions on that?
Counsel?
These fund balances are undesignated, correct? These are just our general reserve? They're not designated for special, for any capital expenses. They're just carried forward.
What you see, what you see on Slide four is what is undesignated, except for the fact that now, in order for us to meet our expenditure budgets this year, it looks like we are going to dip into the reserves.
Gotcha.
So we have two kind of emergency reserves. Is that right? A $5 million and a million?
We have, the $1 million is designated as a disaster reserve, and the $4.1 million is designated as the operating reserve.
All right, so are you saying that the result of the hurricane is, the only hit is $287,000 net?
When we consider the fact that we have additional revenue beyond what we had budgeted? Yes.
Okay, all right. So the additional revenue budgeted was... $16,781. Is that right? That's on page four?
Well, on page four, yes. We have, that's the original budget.
Right, and then the actual?
Seventeen. Seventeen million is what we were expecting to end the year.
So it's another half a million?
Correct.
Dollars?
Correct.
So that helped... That helped moderate the hit on the reserve?
That's correct. And also, the starting balance of the available fund balance, it was $116,000 higher than what we had anticipated.
Actually started at.
So we had a little help at the very beginning.
So you're... So there's revenue numbers here and there's balance sheet numbers on the same. So you're saying you are 4.8 to 4, so you got $100,000 ballpark on the 4.8 to the 4.9? And then you've got 17 minus 16, so you kind of use that estimate, that excess?
Right.
To fund, to top up how we got hit by the reserve?
Correct, correct.
Oh, okay, all right.
And some of the savings on the expenditure side, these are numbers that each director provided their projection for the year, and some accounts are going to be under budget, so that's a good thing. And then we had some vacancies. We'd had some staff turnover, so that creates some salary savings in the personal services costs. And all of that will be seen as we progress through the year. It's not as obvious at the beginning of the year, because you don't realize you're going to have the turnover and all that, but as you progress through the year, and as close as we are now getting up to the end of the fiscal year, we have a good idea as to where those actual numbers will come in.
Frank, I'm sorry, Pete, I thought you were done.
No, I'm sorry. So the hit on the reserve isn't as bad, so I guess the other question would be, since you've used those funding mechanisms to top that up, where, and it's probably here, but so the general fund, not including the 5, 1, and the 1, all right, where is that relative to where? Is that lower than where, or where is that relative to where you expect it to be?
Well, that's where we're at, the minus.
Sorry?
That actually, the available fund balance is the minus $287,000. So in order to cover that, we're dipping into the reserves.
I'm a little confused, but let it go.
I was going to say, I'm going to piggyback on what Pete's saying, and I guess going back to, going back to Hurricane Irma, what's used just for debris removal and other things cost us in the neighborhood of $12 million. Where is that? Where is that in here, where we're showing a deficit of that, or where did we, where was the budget able to absorb that, and where was it absorbed from?
What we have paid during this fiscal year so far is $6.6 million.
Okay, so where's that in here?
It's a part of the expenditures. And it was in the budget. We had budgeted in the 18 million in the original budget, included a budget of $6 million for hurricane expenditures.
Correct.
So the $19,695 includes the additional amounts that we had to spend, or anticipated spending above that $6 million.
So that $6 million expenditure is in that line of $19,695?
That's correct.
And what I'm hearing, I guess, is that was somewhat absorbed by the directors or the different centers, saving money on their line, on their total line item, and on payroll because of vacancies.
Right.
And so really, going back to what Peter said, is $287,763 is what really came out of the, the reserves that we had to spend on Hurricane Irma.
Correct, but we did start, keep in mind...
Well, yeah, we started with a little bit higher number, because of fiscal year 16, 17, or 17, 18, or 16, 17, we had more fund balance to come over after the audit was done and after everything was said and done. We brought more money back.
That's correct.
Carried more money forward than we anticipated. Okay.
Fred?
In the format, would, only because we'll be getting FEMA reimbursements over the next probably 12 years anyway, would it make any sense to show that as a separate expenditure, so it shows separately, and that way you can track that money versus the repayment, so to speak, whatever we get?
To actually show the hurricane expenditures on a separate line item?
Yeah.
Yes, and that's what we've been doing in the monthly reports, as well as in our annual audited financial statements. We did show that out separate, and we will do that for FY 18 as well.
I have like other questions, but I think it's better to just absorb this, and then we can...
Yeah, this was an eye-opener for me, because I wasn't expecting it to come out this way, but it is in the increase, so I've been looking at it very closely, and it's the increase in the revenue, starting with a little extra and more, and then it's the savings that we're going to achieve based on the expected numbers that we have at this time against what was the budgeted, so.
Let me just follow up on one thing. The answer to Greg was, the hurricane basically cost us $6 million, or is that just $6 million cash before reimbursements? Or do we have a number for what the hurricane cost us, net of what we're getting back?
The gross amount that it cost us to date through May 31st, including what we incurred last fiscal year, is $7.7 million.
That's the gross, but what's the net after?
I don't have that calculation. I have a rough calculation of $6 million, because so much was, of it was debris removal, and we are scheduled to get a higher percent reimbursement on that, 90% the first 30 days from FEMA.
So, all right. So you basically roughly are saying it's a million plus 10% of six? You're going to get 90% reimbursement?
Right, right.
Okay.
And we still have additional costs to incur.
The 90% was only the first 30 days.
First 30 days.
That was a smaller amount. After that, it went to, what, 80?
80%.
So it's probably going to be more on the ballpark at 80% of...
Well...
Or 20, or you know, our cost is going to be 20% of what it was.
Right.
And then the other thing is that, one of the reasons we've done way better than we thought was that we were all told that we would spend 12, 12 and a half million bucks. Plus, there was supposed to be money spent for cleaning up parks and all that. There was supposed to be another 3 or 4 million, I thought.
Well, it went from 5 to 12 awful quick.
Yeah, it did, yeah.
Now we're being told it's 6.
I'd rather have it go that way than the other way.
You've got more bills yet to come in, right?
For these two road projects and parks cleanup repairs.
No, but maybe what's the name of the outfit that did all the cleanup work, whatever their name was?
Crowder Golf for the debris.
Are they through?
They are through.
The bills are through.
Yes, yes. And so for the first 30 days, the Crowder Golf and the Thompson bills, Thompson Consulting was the monitors required by FEMA, and we paid them for that period of time, the first 30 days, $2.4 million. For the next 60 days, and these are timelines, the timeframes that FEMA establishes, the two of those companies received $4.6 million from us, for a total of $6.9 million. And so I did do the math on the 80, the 90%, and the 80%, and that comes out to $5.8 million reimbursement from FEMA.
And that's not reflected in here?
No, no, because it's...
We don't have it.
From our financial...
It's not here yet.
Right, right. It's not spendable. It's not to us so that we can spend it, so.
I don't know if it's to the state yet. I've already...
No, it's not the state.
It's not at the state level.
Okay.
And actually, on the reimbursables, you're really going to get it more over 10 to 12 years, not the next couple of years. That's the way it's been going on her.
Okay. Ready for the next slide, or?
Well, only to say, I thought we had a general idea that we were going to, that what Fred said is true historically, but we were going to get more money, money more quickly.
That's what they told us upfront, and now they haven't been able to, because what happened is everyone experienced what we did with the delay in getting the invoices from the vendors, and being able to process all the required documents that have to be uploaded to the FEMA portal. And so now, everyone's submitting around the same time. What I was hoping is that we could get ahead of the game, and that's what the six-week timeline was initially, when there weren't many people having submissions at that time. I did find out from our representative, it seemed like those entities that were able to get early submissions were those that were more school districts that weren't paying for debris removal, to the extent that municipalities had that, so.
Understanding there are no guarantees. What do we think the timeline is?
I've asked that question, and our rep said that she was trying to get an answer for me, so at this point, I really...
If I may, just, I just didn't tell you, when Matthew came through in the fire district, it was two years. I mean, that was, you know, five, six years ago, it was two years before we got any type of reimbursement. And that was right from, I believe, FEMA. Now their, the way I understand it, what they're doing now is FEMA is going to release the money to the state, and the state is then going to relook at everything we've submitted through a different port hole.
That's correct.
And then, they will then release the funds to us after they've reviewed it to make sure it meets all the qualifications, once that, one that FEMA's looked at and the state has looked at, so.
And you know, and then you get emails like this, right? FEMA has approved more than $10.2 million in grants to reimburse the city a plantation, which is great, so there really is no rhyme or reason to it. And we all continue to get these emails, right? I know we're pushing our paperwork and filing our paperwork, and back and forth, back and forth, ebb and flow, right?
Right.
Do you see any glitches in the process, or any thing any of us can help do to?
No, they just made a change. There's a notice that came out that our program representative alerted me to, is that the Consolidated Resource Center that reviews everything, located in West Virginia, that they have issued a change in approach because they're just getting flooded with paperwork, that they're pushing more requirements down to the local staff. And I do think that's positive for us, because we work very closely with the local staff, and so they're doing part of the detailed review. They, she told me they got four new checklists that before that they, before they can release the information, the documents, to the next level, they have to go through. And that, I think that is a good thing for us, so that should help us.
The only other thing I will share, sorry, Pete, the only other thing I will share is that immediately, and they were talking about the same thing with reimbursement, is that right now, the state people who look at our stuff are going to ask us to resubmit it all to them, because they, right now, as of today, don't have, do not have access to go look at the FEMA port hole to see what we've submitted. So we either are going to have to resubmit it to the state level, or hopefully the FEMA allows them to access our area when they review it. Otherwise, it's going to be another FEMA thing. So we told all the fire chiefs in Lee and Clary County to have all your stuff digitized and scanned and ready to resubmit, instead of, because before, when we would have the, when we had our FEMA representative, they'd come and look at it, and we'd scan it and email it right to them, and that was all it was about, so.
You know what I think might be helpful, Ann, not for today, obviously, is just a sheet of paper, which has all the big hurricane numbers on it.
Okay.
It sounds like there's some good news, and there's some news that goes the other way, which is the number that we thought was way up here was somewhere around 6 or 7, but on the other hand, is a float that we're going to have, whether it's two years or 12 years, or whatever, that we didn't think we were going to have. So if you just summarize those on one piece of paper, I think that'd be helpful.
No, I think it'd be great.
And I do have an upcoming slide that shows just the totals, yes.
Just to clarify, excuse my voice, we're not hearing that there's a 12-year limit, but we're not hearing there's one or two years, so we haven't...
What's happened here?
Started to lose it today. So we're not hearing that there's a 12-year period. No one's indicated that from any other jurisdictions to us either.
Next slide deals with the policies that we do currently have in place about restoring reserves, and basically, for both the disaster and the operating reserves, we are, our policies indicate that we're required in the next fiscal year to budget the necessary funds to bring the reserve back up to the levels. Our operating reserves are calculated based on four months of average general fund operating expenditures for the prior two fiscal years. So that's where the $4.1 million has come from. And I will tell you, when I did the calculation for the budget for FY 18, the amount that I calculated was actually a little bit lower than 4.1, because as you recall, there was a reduction in our budgeted operating expenditures. So I'm expecting that it shouldn't be, and the hurricane will come out of that, because that's not regular operating expenditures, so we won't calculate reserves on that, but it should be still close to the 4.1 million.
What's disaster relief, I mean disaster reserves?
Is a million dollars. And that's this amount that had been established through the budget process.
But it's just, it's a fictitious number, like with the operating, you say it's 120 days.
Right, four months, yeah. And, yes, and actually, that would be something I would recommend in light of what we've been through, is to consider increasing those disaster reserves. This chart, next chart on page six, is something that you've been seeing in green sheets, but it is a tracking of the budget transfers and amendments that have come before you. And early in the process of the fiscal year, once again, it's not identified at that time so early on that we will have savings within budgeted line items. We just, the budget was just approved, and it was based on the knowledge that we had as to what was going to be required for the operations for the upcoming year. So this shows how much that we have actually done budget amendments from these reserve accounts, but at the end of the year, it's going to be restored through the fact that we didn't, the fact that we have more revenue coming in, and we didn't actually spend other operating expenditures. So just wanted to mention that to you. But I have been tracking that, because this is my only way of knowing for sure that we're not over expending when we do budget amendments. And again, we don't know for sure where we're going to end until September 30. Projected fund balances of the other funds, so we have many special revenue funds. The first line is, again, the fund balance that comes right from the comprehensive annual financial report, our audited fund balance as of September 30, October 1, 2017. The next line, because these are restricted funds, they are presented as restricted fund balance in, on our balance sheet. But included in that, we need to consider the fact that they are also funding sources for a lot of our capital projects, which we had not spent that money yet. So that money's been committed, because we established a budget to spend at some future time relating to the capital projects. So I have reduced that starting fund balance amount by what's been committed by capital improvement project carryover budgets, to get what would be available for FY 18. So this shows the amounts available in fund balance for each of those funds coming into our current fiscal year. Then I reduced or increased that balance by what our budget reflected. So if you look purely just at the budget for all of these funds, we either budgeted to actually use some of the fund balance, or to increase the fund balance. And you can see, the first column is the Road Impact Fee Fund, and we were building up balances in our Road Impact Fee Fund, and we had capital projects that went out multiple years, and so that was a planned use in FY 18 of $2 million of our Road Impact Fee Fund. The interesting thing about the Road Impact Fee Fund, and we just released an email today that's showing that the Road Impact Fee Funds for this fiscal year have exceeded our budget. So this $5.9 million is closer to $8.7 million at this point, available fund balance to bring into FY 2019. And these are important numbers because of our five-year financial plan and our capital improvement plan, to have these balances available to help fund those amounts.
So when you say available for, that means that's a balance sheet number for October 1, 2018, where it says projected fund, projected fund balance available for 19?
Correct.
That's an estimate of what it will be on October 1, 18?
That's at this time, yes.
Right, okay. And you think that's going to be closer to $8,700,000 instead of $5,900,000?
Yes.
Okay.
And one of the things with the, all these funds, we have, except for the debt, but everything is locked in, pretty much expenditures that you know. It's either by contract or a debt agreement, and then the road, all the impact fee funds are primarily there to, are required to be used for capital improvements, so they're transfers out to the capital improvement fund.
Kind of piggybacking on what Pete said, that, those are actual projected numbers, or are they hard numbers based on what's in right now? Now, the only reason I say that is that based on maybe numbers that are coming from John, or is it based on, okay, right now, eight months, seven months into it, we've collected X. If we can, if we project out, we're going to collect the same amount. That's where the 8.7 is, or is that 8.7 actual, I know we've got the money in the bank right now?
That includes what we have in the bank right now.
So it could be more.
It could be more.
Let's say John gets a new development in there, and they pay the impact fees, or we raise it back?
He got in a pretty sizable one this past month, so that's what pumped it up.
Johnny boy.
Sounds like a law firm.
Yeah, right.
Got a deal in.
Okay, thank you.
Dolmer's the only one harder to get on the telephone than me, I've noticed.
He answers me, or are we talking to him?
Yeah, does he? Oh, okay.
You've got to have all his numbers.
The next slide is a presentation that was done during the budget processing. Councilman DeWitt had requested this, just showing our various sources of revenues and the restrictions. So just keeping in mind that certain revenues are available and can be used for any legal purpose, but others are highly restrictive as to the purpose that they can be used for.
Can't take credit, I was FGFOA. I got roped into going to an FGFOA conference, and I seen this, and I loved it.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Good stuff?
Yeah.
Nice.
So the building funds, to repeat, I guess, the past conversations, those are in a lock box. They're only used for a certain, right? That $5 million is really not available.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Haven't heard that since Al Gore.
Lock box.
There you go. Getting old.
This next slide, I thought was, would be helpful in light of the news that we received on Friday about our increase in our property taxable values. There is a trend with the estimated taxable values, that by the time July 1 comes around, they tend to increase in value. And rightfully so. This is a very preliminary number, and the email that comes from the appraiser's office says, "This isn't for budget purposes. This is just to give you an idea." And then they say, "This number, July 1, is for budget purposes." But what we're working with right now is a 3.89% increase. The other thing, just to point out, and it's minor, but on the information that came out on Friday, it also showed the final 2007 values, and that value was slightly lower than the value that you see here. So that's where we ended the tax year 2017 for what would have been levied.
I thought I read in the article about that, though, this year, that Wilkerson's office was still in the middle of a process where they were trying to divine what reductions would take place because of the hurricane in values, which clearly implied the number could be lower.
Correct.
So is that?
Well, that's what I wondered, if that would be the case, as to, but then there was the other side of that, is that possibly with insurance proceeds, there could have been some improvements that could have helped to counter that, but that may not have happened that quickly.
Were you saying, in any event, we're going to know on July 1?
July 1 will be the numbers that we'll have, you know, to move forward with the budget.
But because of the hurricane, do you anticipate, like, and I had that same question, and I got it answered, from the 993 to the 984, that was down, you know, 10,000 or 100, whatever it was. My question is, is now, because of the hurricane, do we think that that number's going to be even small, greater? Because people will go in and challenge, it says this.
That's possible, because I think it is a result of the appeal process.
Okay.
The other thing, just to note, I thought this was interesting, the new construction, we are slightly above where we were in 2007.
And, so obviously, 2007, prior to my time being here, but was that the high watermark? I'm reading your, the 2017 final...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that should say 17.
Okay, I didn't know if you're, you're trying to say, okay, we're approaching the mountain that it was in 2007 before it crashed. I just didn't, I just wanted... I just didn't, I just wanted to.
I'm sorry.
No, I, no, that's okay, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, be it for me. I'm, I'm good at catching typos.
Good, good, thank you. Appreciate that and apologize for it.
All right. And, and you said one thing, Anne, I'm sorry, real quick. Just to go back, you had said they tend to be higher in July?
The, the percent increases.
As compared to what?
To the, this June 1 estimate.
Oh, okay, okay, I got it. I'm, I'm, great.
But no guarantee.
But no guarantee, got it. Got it, got it, got it, all right. Fuzzy mail. Yeah, is this the slide? Oh, yeah.
This does show the calculation of how much the properties that are in this, within the city boundaries are contributing to other taxing jurisdictions or taxing entities. So, for 2017, the taxable value ended up being this amount and this calculates the dollars based on that taxable value.
So, our taxpayers pay $151 million in property taxes every year and we get 8.
That's correct. 5.4%.
And there's the breakout. And anytime we say anything, we're the bad guys, so I'll just couch it that way.
But the, those are the numbers.
Those are the numbers.
So, 6 million a year for the library.
Right.
Correct.
Yep.
I felt a few mosquitoes the other day, for the first time in a long time. I know I really did, but.
Mosquitoes.
Wait for the drones.
Right, and what about the hyacinth control?
What is that for? Is that for exotics?
Aren't those lily pads? Or am I?
I thought we liked hyacinth.
We got plenty, we got a lot of lily pads in town. I know where they are. You know, Monet's not looking for his next scene, right? 247,000. Counsel, anything on this slide or do we just want to bite our tongue and move along?
We're paying a lot of taxes.
Yeah, we are. Yes, we are, Amy. We absolutely are.
And the water management district is the three added up, right? 1, 1 million 2, 1 million 3, and 440.
Yes.
Yeah.
They have those broken out millages.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay. By the way, uh, I did math once and my rough estimate was when the city was formed in 2000, our taxes to Lee County were about 18 million. I'd had Anne to check that someday, but I just did it based on the Advalorm and our, and the tax rates at the time. Just went back to their annual reports. So, I think it's gone from about 18 to 40, I forget where the library was from the year 2000. It's a. Sorry?
It used to be over a mil, it used to be like 1 mil.
Lee County, yeah.
The Lee County Library.
Yeah. Oh, oh, interesting. Anyhow.
Okay. Advalorm tax revenue. With our downtown, um, structure, we look at the estimated value at, at June 1, it's 504,814,000. We back off the base value that was agreed upon to get the portion that, uh, 232,000,545,209, that relates to the downtown. And the millage that we collect associated with that dollar amount goes directly into the downtown debt service fund. So, that comes off of, of our total $10 million number in order to get the portion that goes to the general fund. And just looking at the, using the 2007, the current, 17 current, uh, millage rate, that calculates to 8.2 million dollars. We use a collection factor because a lot of people, um, pay within the discount period or we have reductions in taxable values through the appeals process. And that 96% has worked out well for us. State law requires us to budget at least 95% of, of the amount. So, that generates a projected 7.9 million dollars for Advalorm tax revenue for the general fund. What we budgeted in 2018 is the 7,670,000. So, that's an increase of 286,769 dollars. Increase in revenue over what was in the original 2018 budget.
So, what's the math of what's going into the downtown fund? It's .81 of 232, uh?
It is 190,000 from us. And the county at their current millage would be 800,000.
800,000, okay.
Next slide, just.
Let me just say, you just, those are just numbers, you, not, not the county's number, but our numbers, you're just putting that in the debt service fund. That's what you're saying?
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Once, once it, and that number can change based on the final number. So, it's when the final number comes out, then we know how much. And the, and the county's very prompt with sending us their letter telling them how much their share is and then, and paying us, so.
And they pay 0.85% of the increase?
Correct, yes. That's the difference in the formula. Okay, this, next slide does show just some calculations, some sample calculations, um, if millage were to be adjusted. And that was just to give you an idea. In this case, if millage was 0.85, which is low over 3 cent increase, um, it would generate another 318,000 dollars in Advalorm for the general fund. Down below does a calculation for taxable properties at these amounts, 250,000, 350,000, 500,000. What the tax rate is at our current millage and what their taxes would be calculated to be based on these three examples. Just to give you an idea of additional costs to, to those property owners if, if the millage were adjusted in that regard. Works out to be an increase in, of 1, 1 cent, 1 penny generates about 97,000 of revenue. Any questions on that?
So, 10 cents would get us close to a million bucks, right?
Correct. Uh, and this is, just for your information, but these are calculations that are done each year as of, during the trim process. And these are numbers from 2007 trim process showing maximum millage with a majority vote, 1.20720. And two, with a 2/3 vote, maximum millage rate is, at that time was 1.3279.
Did you say 07 or 17?
2017.
Yeah.
Audrey, do you recollect what the highest mill rate for the city was?
Basically ballpark.
Yeah.
It would be a little over 1 mil. I want to say 1.12 was our highest.
Around 2004, 5 or 6 or?
No, more. I would say it was around 2002.
Oh.
It was earlier. I can check residence.
That's all right.
But.
Thank you.
For 2001 or for 2002, it was 1.22, the same as 2001.
It was off by 1.1.
1.22.
Which is $1,000.
What was the taxable value at that time though?
Much lower.
3, 3, 3.5 billion. Now, 10 billion. Hurricane Irma. It's just a high level. The expenses that we incurred in FY 2017 incurred through May 31, the 6.5, gets a total for the storm at this point of 7.7 actually spent and paid. And we have an estimate of 1.2 million dollars for additional damages that need to be repaired.
So, the thing I asked you before is mostly here, except what's not here is how much we have been paid by insurance, right? Or by FEMA?
Well, by insurance, it's, it's just, just below 200,000.
And so, all right, so then how much of this are we expecting? So, this, this is a total of what we're going to spend, right? As best you can do it, right?
Correct, yeah.
All right, because the last is cost estimated to complete. So, how much of this are we expecting to get back from FEMA and when? You have to answer that now, but that's, that's the question.
Right.
If somehow you can give us something on that.
Yes.
I guess my question's for Arlene then, since she was, been really involved in this and so, so is Anne. I mean, where did the 12 million dollars that we kept hearing from up here come from?
I can't answer that.
And the only reason, if you add all this up, it's 8.9 million and we kept hearing.
Right.
1, 12.1, 10, or higher.
Yeah. Initially, um, and there, and I did find out that the initial estimate did come from the contractor about the cubic yards of debris. And, um, so initially, the estimate was 250,000 cubic yards of debris. And the estimated cost and that, I obtained that cost so that we had a number for the budget. But the cost for 250,000 cubic yards was, the estimated cost was 5.5 million dollars. So, when we found out that the cubic yards were escalating up to 500,000, that was just that simple math of doubling that. But what has happened is some of those costs as initially projected were, came in actually lower, which is, is a good thing. And what's interesting, having looked at every single invoice that's come through is, um, the debris went to a staging area, then it was marched. And so, the quantities, because these are all statistics you have to report to FEMA, the quantities that actually went to a final disposal site, just dramatically different, so.
Okay.
And I imagine there, it's, it's hard to estimate what that, it's going to be.
So, Anne, if you took these Irma costs on page 13 and you went back to page four, which is your general fund, i- is the, the total, where'd you end up with Greg, 8, 8 million?
8, 9 if you asked, if you do the, yeah.
Is that reflected, how much of that is reflected in these numbers where you get to the beginning? Or wherever you get to the beginning opening balance in October, wherever that was?
Right.
How, how much is reflected there?
Okay. The opening balance, the 1,149,630 had already come out of fund balance. So, this is the 4.9 million dollars of available fund balance. That is after deducting the 1.149.
Well, let me ask you a different way. I don't know if you have it here. Do you have a, a general fund projected opening fund balance for October 1st, 2018? In other words, the beginning of the 2019 year? You have them for the other funds, but, you know, we went through that.
Yeah, that, that's, that's what this is.
What, what's the number?
Is that the 4.8?
What page?
On page four for 4.812. That's your test intended?
That was the original budget.
But that's operating, that's operating disaster reserves. I'm asking what the.
No, no, that's total. That's total fund balance. That's available fund balance.
Where it says ending operating, oh, operating, gotcha, all right. It's 4 million 8, so that's, that's the projected opening October 1st, 2018 general fund.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So, how much of the 8.9 million is baked in there? By which I mean reflected as.
Already reflected, it's the 7, the 7.7.
Is, is in there.
Is already taken out, correct.
And on top of that, you're going to get reimbursement, so that's a conservative number.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Nicole Perini has, um, requested that some of the items that are budgeted in the capital improvements projects.
I don't know, it's all the same, Nicole, don't worry about it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize. I said, as soon as it came out, I thought, no. That's a wrong vowel. I apologize. So, the slide shows those amounts and the projects. And what she is proposing is that these be basically, this funding stay in the general fund instead of being transferred over to the capital projects fund to help fund, um, some of the repairs at the parks. And what she has done is she's put in a request for these amounts to, um, go back into the CIP for the fiscal year 2020.
I know it's not popular, so you want to roll it forward? All these want to be rebudgeted for next year at these amounts?
Of 2020.
Oh, 2020, okay.
For 2020, because we have, excuse me, I'm sorry. Because of Nicole's workload in finishing the recovery from Irma, for the reimbursable funds, we have 18 months to complete that. So, we're asking for more time to move these projects out to 2020 and do the repair work in this, in this.
All right, so we're not going to put this in a budget, we're just going to put it on the CIP for future?
For a future in 2020.
And, and what I'll be doing is bringing a budget transfer to, to council to recognize the fact that we're going to transfer, basically reverse that transfer. Because right now, it's showing as a rolled over budget in our capital projects fund.
So, you're throwing it out another year? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm going to bring it back into the general fund for two years.
The money, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, that it would provide budget, the ability to budget the expenses for those repairs in the general fund.
The park hurricane damage, is that included in the 1 million plus that you said has to be done?
Yes.
In the future?
Yes, mhm.
Okay, so that's already included in the previous slide that you had?
Yes, yes. And I do have a detailed list of those estimated costs that I'd be happy to provide to council if you're interested in.
These here, these are capital projects. These aren't what were damaged during the hurricane.
No, no.
This is just what we're putting off in, in order to use money for things that were damaged.
That's correct.
But it's not only the park, this 1 million 2, is it? There's other things that has to be?
There's some roads.
Okay.
Okay. Next slide deals with possible revenue enhancement options. And the two that are presented were two that council did address previously in 2016. The electrical franchise fee. It does, we do have the ability to increase that another 1%. The maximum rate is 3, it was 5%. And that would generate in a full year, $700,000 in revenue. Communication services tax is currently at 3.61% after the increase that occurred in 2016. And an increase of 1% in that rate would actually generate about 400,000 in revenue in a full year. And just in that first year of implementation, because of the way the timing occurs, is we don't get a full year.
We've got a sunset on that rate.
That's correct. We have a sunset of December 31st.
Just build in that sunset.
Yeah. December 31st, 2022 is the sunset.
Which was the one that we were going to do so much, but then we found we could only do?
Electrical franchise fee. The council had, had approved moving forward with a 1.5% increase. And when we went through the process to, to develop the ordinance, it identified that the law restricts you to an increase of only 1%, not more than 1% at a time.
If I may? Currently, our franchise, as it's stated up there on her slide, shows the maximum rate is 5%. Council should note that Lee County in 2017 adopted a new franchise ordinance with FPNL. They changed the rate to 6%. I don't know if that's something you wish to renegotiate with FPNL when we open it up. If council gives direction to go forward and change the rate to say, um, 5% or 4.5%. You may want to go to the Lee County, um, 6% as a possibility.
Is that a maximum or is that what they charge?
That's the maximum rate, not what they charge. Now, what they charge under that ordinance 1702 is 4.5%.
4.5. So, that's, that's unincorporated Lee, what is that?
Yes, sir. I think I brought the ordinance with me. Right, it's Lee County ordinance 1702 and the franchise is 4.5% of the billed revenues.
Well, I'm not suggesting we're going to do or not do anything, but it would be helpful to see what neighboring jurisdictions are charging on this stuff.
No, I agree.
Yeah. Meaning? Meaning?
You know what unincorporated Lee's doing now?
Right.
It's at 4.5.
And then we have Astero and Collier and Naples, right?
Yes, we had that information from 2016, but we'll update it to-
So, who sets that? The Lee County Commission?
It's a franchise, so that's a mutual agreement. And so, it was renegotiated, the franchise. It used to be 5 percent in 1997, when Lee County originally did it, and we did a back, a similar-
But it's Lee County?
And Lee County renegotiated with FPNL to change it in ordinance 1702. So, I don't, it's council's call. I know you won't raise it to six, I mean, you could raise it to six if you want, but if council and FPNL agreed, but at least you know what the numbers are for 2017.
And then, this slide is just giving you a preview of what staff will be recommending, plans at this time to recommend from a standpoint of new capital improvement projects. And I believe you're probably familiar with all of these on the list, with the hopes that we will be receiving the local mitigation strategy grant funding.
It has in perens, there is funding to cushion the impact, right? It's 2,009, but it's 2,009 minus 1,008.
That's correct.
Yeah, yes.
What's Astero's tax rate?
.77. Right?
I'm not sure off the top of my head.
And he asked, didn't hear what he said.
What's Astero's tax rate?
Oh, yeah. 71 or something.
Something like that, Fred.
Yeah, it's .7 something.
This may be a, I just don't know the answer to it. The Logan Road project, that the slide you have up there, 2.9 million, 2.95. Why is only 1.8 of the road impact fees? Why can't, since it's a new road, why can't we use the entire, use it out of impact fees?
Oh, those are the credits. I'm sorry.
Well, I know the credits, but I mean, why, you know, out of that, is everything-
It's nature of the cost. Nature of the cost, whether they qualify for impact fees.
At your city council meeting, when they did a presentation,
Right.
there was the discussion that there was a storm, there was a stormwater conveyance. Of course, whatever was the borrow pit would go for the road.
Right.
But when you convert that borrow pit into a different conveyance pending South Florida Water Management District, that was going to be another phase of the project, and that would not qualify for impact fee credits, because it doesn't, it's not really a road project for that part.
So, if we weren't doing the conveyance on the side of the road, and this may be to matter, whoever, the road itself is only going to cost us, the pavement on the ground has only cost us 1.8 million.
It's more than pavement, but-
Gotcha.
But we could use, could we use other, I mean, that's the road impact fee credits that is coming from the developer that has to put the road in, correct?
All right, so there's, the developer has to make his obligation for Collier County per the contribution agreement. That's the base number. Then after that, we're paying credits for the improvements we required that was above and beyond the original commitment requirement to make it more enhanced. And that's the impact fee credits. And then there was a third element to it when they did the presentation, and that was the, not the stormwater to the road, but the future potential flowway.
Well, I think Greg's question is, the difference can be paid from impact fees, or does it have to come out of the general funds? That's the question, right?
If it's not part of the road system, it is not, now, stormwater for the road obviously would be part of the road system.
Right.
It's how it is characterized. And at the council meeting, staff went to great lengths at that time, Mr. Dolmire, you want to come up? To explain why it was not. If council makes the requisite finding that it is part of the road-
Well, the answer that is that it's general funds?
Well, yes.
Or other legally available revenue, gas tax?
I guess my question is, and again, I don't know what I don't know, is who makes that determination if it is legally sufficient to use impact fees for X, Y, or Z? Is it Audrey, or is it the county? Because I know for, in the fire department, if we want to use impact fee money, we have to submit a letter to the county and say, what say you? And the only reason I say it this way is because impact fees are only to be used for new growth, new things, new whatever. Unless you can determine it to be a significant advantage for that, i.e., we got new radio systems, it's going to improve the safety, and without this, somebody could, whatever. I guess my point is, would it be worth a letter from the mayor, from the council, from Audrey, from Matt, to say, in doing this conveyance, adding this thing, it's going to move more water, or from South Florida Water Management, could we use impact fees for that?
A letter like that might be a little premature, and the reason why I say that is because at this time, that conveyance is not going to go into Collier County. We do not have the permits to take it south of the county line. So, moving water and using it as a conveyance might be something that you could request approval for, but not until you have permission to actually bring that into Collier County and down.
I guess I'm not using, maybe I'm-
All right, maybe, let me explain a little bit-
Well, hold on, let me, I'm not referring so much of the box culvert going underneath I-75, but let's say, normal road maintenance says we want a six-inch ditch, or a six-foot ditch on the, whatever side. Because of this, we want a 10-foot ditch on it, and because of that, it's going to cost us X number of dollars more to do that. That is not part of the impact fee, but can we ask, whoever we got to ask, mother may we, use this money for that because of future?
Can I answer that one?
Yeah, I don't care.
It's a legal answer, then I'll let you do the other portion. So, you're kind of mixing up expenditures and credits. So, you ask Lee County a letter, you send the letter, and if it's a capital improvement, they assess whether it's four years or seven years, or whatever is now used under accounting for capital improvements. Under credits, section 2-202
Okay.
states, the amount of credit approved by the council is limited to the actual verified cost of construction. And then, there's an ability that you can reduce it, but we don't, we're not looking at reduction here. So, it's the cost of construction of the road, which would include stormwater for the road. In this case, the next phase that John is referencing as a phase, is something not really related to the road. So, anything that could be related to the road will be given impact fee credits. And then, that third phase, which would be permitting to do a flowway, is that what we're referring to it as, or?
Might be a glorified term, but a canal, yes.
Right.
Well, and I guess-
I just, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, no.
Matt, I thought that these guys were in for so much money, and we had additional expense because of what we're doing, and we gave them credits for that. I know that helps.
Well, it does a little bit, but I guess-
No, I'm sorry.
It does, I understand the credits and I understand all that. I guess my question is, okay, if there's money left over, the credits are actually going to whoever the builder is.
The builder.
The builder's going to that. So, now we still have 1.1 million dollars.
Right.
Can we use, of the 8.7 million dollars in the impact fee fund, instead of taking out of the general fund, or budgeting for it, or raising taxes for it? Can we take it out of the road impact fee fund?
Matt Feeney, for the record, public works director. The question really, from my perspective, that we are working with our legal department on, is forget the concept of a conveyance. John just told you it wasn't. It's not functional. It won't be until it's permitted. It is not part of the road, the eastern ditch is not part of the roadway's conveyance system. All that drains on the western side of the road. What it is currently is a borrow pit. And so, the question is, can the expenses of the borrow pit be applied to with impact fee credits? The box culverts-
Either one.
Right. The box culverts pretty clearly probably can't be, but I think that's the question that maybe is at the root of what you're talking about. And I don't know that we have that answer yet.
Okay.
I think it's a high probability you'll be able to do it, because borrow pit's part of building any highway, whether it's I-75 or what.
And that's the very messy line here, is for purposes of whatever construction they do with the area there, to grab fill from that area, or to provide drainage for the road to that area, although I think this is a closed drainage system road, but that would be part of the road project, because that would be credits that would qualify under the ordinance. Where you run into a problem is where you are then altering the borrow pit to make it into a different use for your facilities. It would be no different than if you took a borrow pit and converted it to a wayside park, or, because that happens sometimes. You know, you make great parks out of, Lakes Park is a good example of, you know, a mining facility that turned into a park facility. So, you, you know, it can happen, but that would be where the credits really aren't part of the road at that point, when you're doing that conversion. But obviously, for taking whatever you're going to dig out and put onto the roadside, fair game. And my understanding is staff did the division based on that calculation.
Ann, if we were to fund all this, what would be the bottom line without, you know, just as you presented it in here?
Actually, the large sheets that you have at your, I think they were under this packet, shows-
Oh, here it is.
Yeah. And some of it's spread to-
It's 33, 34? Lines 33, 34 on the page one.
Well, the page, the last page, starting in, at row 133, if you look down, column O, it starts, the funding sources, how much would be required from each funding source? So, for FY 2019, 1.3 million dollars coming from the general fund, 5.3 million dollars.
Right.
And that's all of the items that are showing up in that column O, being proposed funding requests for FY 19.
So, most of that 1.3 is for Logan Boulevard, is that what you're saying?
Well, no, actually, the rest of Logan Boulevard was actually-
It's line 118, 119 on that page for Logan Boulevard regional floodway drainage.
Yeah. And then, on page one is the-
The lines 33 and 34.
Yes. Road impact fees and the gas tax.
So, this column O, funding request is new money? It's a new additional, how to read that?
It's new-
Or is using what's already reserved, or it's already allocated?
No, it is new money.
It's new money, okay.
Going to, a lot of it is going to existing projects.
Gotcha. So, this is the product of whatever staff has been doing?
Correct. And this is a very preliminary draft.
Right.
You know, might seem like a minor thing, although it, you know, it is and it isn't all at the same time, but any changes on the gas tax? I know in years past, Mike, you'd had some questions, and has anything changed with that in the formula, the calculations, the people that fill up here versus fill up in Fort Myers versus wheel, none of that's changed?
Yeah, not, no, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, okay. Thanks. Counsel? How we doing?
Just a, well, I guess the question I have, just at first glance, 30 seconds here. You know, first thing that jumps out is quadrant study, or the quadrant plan, went from 4.8 to 2.3. Where did that, when you're looking at the difference between N and O?
Where is that, Greg? I'm sorry.
Line, uh-
9, 10, 11.
Oh, I'm, okay. I'm looking, thank you.
Column N is where we are available budget as of April 30th, and that's budget will carryover. Column O is new money
Oh, so word test.
Being added to the project.
Got you, okay. These are added new money, so now, in that line item, or in that reserve, we will have 6.71.
So, if you look at U, then you would see the total project cost at U.
Well, but that's only for the 10-year period.
Yeah, that's for a 10-year period. I'm saying that at the end of, this time next year, if we don't pull any money out of that line item, there should be 7.1 million and some change.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, you would have-
That we could use, that we always talk about, money in the bank that we can use when we go to legislators, say, all right, we got the quadrant study, here's our, here's our skin in the game, as Councilman Forbes puts it.
Here's our match?
Yep.
Upfront and personal, and-
All right, now I got, that's new money, not what's going to happen.
Correct.
I'm sorry.
But Ann, it's the 4.9 plus the 2.3 plus the 3.7. If you scroll all the way over to column U to get to the 9.8?
The 9.8 does not include the carryover. It's only new, the new money being added.
Okay, right, okay, gotcha. Thank you.
So, what you would have available would be the 9 plus the 4.8. The new money plus the existing.
Now I can understand.
Yeah, now I-
I'm glad you asked that question, because I couldn't follow what this, now I get it. Now it makes sense.
So, where are we on, other than that, which is a large amount of money, putting money away, new money for flood projects, or not here?
So, part of the LMS discussion we have
Oh, right.
Is the Logan Boulevard floodway drainage at 2.3, and then the Pines Preserve, but if you notice, we've taken the, it's 75, we're dedicating the 25 percent match.
Right. Gotcha. All right. Well, this is just to give us today, right?
Yes.
This is not to discuss today.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, at least now we understand a little bit, because I asked those questions.
And we do have another budget workshop July 9th, and I think that might be a good time to have further discussion, and it gives you a chance to look at, look at these.
And the hard numbers of being by then, or the more accurate?
Correct, yes.
Additionally, on July 9th, we'll be amending the goals, as you see on line five, number one, transportation. We'll have the goals reflecting the goals that were adopted at our workshop.
Gotcha.
So, storm, stormwater will be the number one priority.
So, that'll all be together then, so we can look at it?
I guess just a request, and I know it's probably preliminary, and I don't know if you can do it by June 9th. Are we going to have, like, I guess, a rough budget book?
On July 9th, you will receive your budget books.
Okay. Because the only reason I say this, because I know it's near and dear to all our hearts, and especially Councilman Flynn, like Sun Trail, there's nothing in there for O. And I know that we'd want to put, I mean, just something in there for Sun Trail in case something pops up.
Yeah. Actually, we had 50,000, didn't we? Or was I missing?
Yeah, 50 in there, but I'm saying, do we want to do, you know, if we think it's coming in the near future, kind of what we kind of do at the fire department, you know, we think it's coming, so if we can afford to put 50 away, 50 away, 50 away, here, sooner or later, we're talking about real money, that if we need to use it, we can use it.
Yeah. Bottom line of that is, we're going to get some, got to get some other funding.
Funding sources.
Yeah. But appreciate the thought.
Yes.
50 wouldn't do it.
No, I'm just looking at, there's different holes in here that we all-
Right. One request I would have, and I'll sit down with Arlene and Ann, it's, Astero did something a few years ago, which basically showed basic, if we're a private business, it'd be a revenue, PNL, which shows, trying to understand in ballpark, how much free cash we're generating in the general fund. So, nothing to do, I'll try to come up with something else, talk to you about it. Yeah.
So, counsel, we're at 5:16. Do we have more questions? Do we want to take a few-minute break and start promptly at 5:30?
Sounds great.
City council?
Good work, Ann.
That sound good?
Good job.
Okay, and I know some public members have come in. Is there any public comment at this time? This is a budget workshop, but feel free if there's a public comment. If not, and seeing none, okay, we'll adjourn, and we'll start city council promptly at 5:30. Thank you.